Before we get started, I would ask our local community leaders to join me in a moment of silence to denounce racism and violence in our community, our county, our state, our country, and our planet. I would like to call the special meeting of the Kankakee County Board on June 2nd, 9:00 a.m. to order. Our invocation today is by county board member James Burns.
Mr. Seeroy. Lord, as we see these unfortunate events happen before our eyes around the country, please look over all those peacefully protesting and standing up to injustice, as well as look over our law enforcement and all those protecting our rights, and hope and please look over our leaders and hope leadership, true leadership stands up and over time cooler prevail. Thank you.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, justous for all. Thank you. Now, could I get a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Mr. Washington. Mr. Hess.
Present.
Mr. Tholen. Mrs. Polk.
Present.
Mr. Snipes.
Present.
Mr. Byrne.
Present.
Mr. Seeroy.
Present.
Mr. Lear.
Present.
Mrs. Weber. Mrs. Peters.
Present.
Mr. Peyton.
Present.
Mrs. Parker.
Present.
Ms. Dunbar.
Present.
Mr. Kinzinger.
Present.
Mr. Fairfield.
Present.
Mr. Zenz.
Present.
Ms. Haas.
Present.
Mr. Carrico.
Present.
Mr. Eckhoff. Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Swanson.
Present.
Ms. Zakulo.
Present.
Mr. Featherling.
Present.
Mr. Donnell.
Present.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Long.
Present.
Mr. Kirkstra.
Present.
Mr. Wheeler.
Mr. Washington.
Mr. Washington, join us.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have no public comment today. Seeing there's no public comment, we will move on to old business, and I will ask the clerk to read the resolution authorizing the county board chairman to sign a renewal agreement with NYMEC aggregation and waive the reading of the contract.
Resolution of the county board of Kankakee County, Illinois, authorizing the county board chairman or designee to renew an aggregation program for electric load. Do you want me to read the entire contents as well?
Might as well.
Okay.
Please, Dan, thank you.
No, no. Whereas in 2012, the residents of Kankakee County passed a referendum to participate in electric aggregation pursuant to 20 ILCS 3855/1-92. And whereas the county hired NYMEC in 2012 to solicit bids from multiple suppliers in an opt-out program and to consult with the county in a decision to select the supplier that best meets the county's needs. Whereas the corporate authorities hereby grant the county board chairman or his designee the authority to execute a contract without further action by the corporate authorities and will again engage NYMEC to solicit bids from multiple suppliers and consult with the county in the decision to select the supplier that best meets the county needs, see Exhibit A. And whereas the commodity of the electric industry fluctuates and a proposal must be accepted on the day of the bid, however, the final decision will be based upon market pricing and the county retains the option of suspending the program and returning all participants back to Commonwealth Edison. And whereas the finance committee at its regularly scheduled meeting of May 28th, 2020, after review and discussion, recommends that the county board chairman or his designee is hereby authorized to sign and coordinate an electric aggregation plan of operation and governance with municipalities within Kankakee County for a term of three and will again engage NYMEC to manage and solicit bids from multiple suppliers and consult with the county in advance of selecting the supplier that best meets the county's needs. Now therefore, be it resolved that the aggregation program for the county shall continue to operate as an opt-out program for residential and small commercial retail customers, and the corporate authorities of the county or its designee shall fully inform residential and small commercial retail customers in advance before the aggregation program is renewed and that all information shall comply, all information provided shall comply with the requirements of the Act. Now therefore, be it further resolved by the Kankakee County Board that the county board chairman or his designee is hereby authorized to sign and coordinate an electric aggregation plan of operation and governance with municipalities within Kankakee County for a term of three and will again engage NYMEC to manage and solicit bids from multiple suppliers and consult with the county in advance of selecting the supplier that best meets the county's needs, and NYMEC will assist in providing assistance to residents with questions.
I'm looking for a motion to accept.
Polk.
Mrs. Polk with a first.
Second.
Swanson.
Mr. Swanson with a second. Any discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kinzinger.
I assume that NYMEC wrote this contract. Has it been reviewed by our attorneys?
I believe it has, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, then.
Mr. Snipes, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. Then I'm going to ask that it be amended in order to have corrections. One is, there's, it says three, it doesn't say three years, things of this nature, and then there's some other things that need to be adjusted as to, you know, currently bringing the chairman as it is written, and I mean, we have a different chairman now and some other things. So, gonna ask that it be reviewed upon our approval to correct the necessary corrections and then to prove it as corrected.
So, it, let me get you, Mr. Snipes, I think the term of three is a good legal definition for three years, and Mr. Rowe, can you concur on that?
You're reading a term of three?
The term of three.
Term of three years?
It just says term of three.
Oh, it should say year.
Okay, we can amend that, then.
Right, and then we also have to say the pass and adopt it, you say in October, we need to change that to current.
Yes.
And Mike Bossner as chairman, we need to change that, and then at the top. So that's why I'm saying, I just needed to go back and just put in the necessary, it's minor correction, but we need to get those corrected, and then, so we approve it with the amended corrections. I have no objections into approving it.
Okay, thank you. We'll get that.
But I need a second to that amendment.
Anybody want a second?
Thank you.
Polk.
Mrs. Polk, seconds. Okay, thank you. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Okay, it is amended, and then back to the passing of this resolution. We're receiving money on this, I don't know if we're spending money, but maybe we'll have a roll call vote, anyway.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Smith.
Mr. Smith, thank you.
When do we find out what the cost per unit for the residents is?
I think they were trying, as, in the finance committee, he was trying to lock it in at an average of, and I don't, we don't have the graph here for us today, and I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, but it was between seven, around 7.1, is that correct, Mr. Wheeler? It was somewhere between 7.1 and?
Yeah, the rate fluctuates from comment every month, as it was explained in the finance committee. There's a base rate that's set, and then they have a true-up at the end of each month to be able to prove that with what the actual usage. So the residents of those, will not pay more than what the comment rate is at any time during the length of this contract. So every month it changes, in theory, based on a true-up. There's a predicted rate, and then it goes up or down based on what the actual usage was statewide and things like that. But it is never more than the comment rate. And this is comments policy, not the MC squared.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call, thank you.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Hess.
Aye, aye.
Mrs. Polk.
Aye.
Mr. Snipes.
Aye.
Mr. Byrne. Mr. Seeroy.
Aye.
Mr. Lear.
Aye.
Mrs. Weber.
Aye.
Mrs. Peters.
Aye.
Mr. Peyton.
Aye.
Mrs. Parker.
Aye.
Ms. Dunbar.
Aye.
Mr. Kinzinger.
Aye.
Mr. Fairfield.
Aye.
Mr. Zenz.
Aye.
Ms. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Carrico.
Aye.
Mr. Eckhoff.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Swanson.
Aye.
Ms. Zakulo.
Aye.
Mr. Featherling.
Aye.
Mr. Donnell.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Kirkstra.
Aye.
Mr. Wheeler.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, moving on, could I have you read the next resolution into the record, please? Mr. Henderson?
Resolution of the county board of Kankakee County, Illinois regarding leasing purchase of county vehicles and related equipment by the sheriff's department. Whereas the county has need to periodically replace its vehicles, which have become too old for their intended usage due to high mileage and excessive repair costs. And whereas under the state bid program, the vehicles are leased for the use of the county sheriff's department, corrections and maintenance, under an option to purchase agreement. And whereas pursuant to 55 ILCS 5/5-1083, the county board may purchase or lease any personal property in installments of 10 years. And whereas the county board on September 9th, 2019, approved the purchase of 11 Chevy Tahoe police squad vehicles, seven Dodge 1500 Ram trucks, and the necessary related equipment slash computer slash camera for their intended use as sheriff's vehicles, computer and camera for one Dodge 1500 Ram truck, one Ford F-250, one plow, and one salt spreader for the maintenance department in resolution number 2019-09-10-154. And whereas the county board in resolution number 2019-09-10-154 authorized the county board chairman to enter into a 36-month lease agreement at an interest rate of 2.25% for approximately $808,918 with municipal bank. And whereas the county board on November 12th, 2019, approved to amend resolution number 2019-09-10-154 to authorize the purchase of 11 Chevy Tahoe police squad vehicles, five Ford Explorers, and the necessary related equipment, computer, camera for their intended use as sheriff's vehicles, computer and camera in resolution number 2019-11-12-186. And whereas the county board in resolution number 2019-11-12-186 further authorized the county board chairman to enter into a 36-month lease agreement at an interest rate of 2.25% for approximately $828,893.02 with municipal bank. And whereas the county board on March 10th, 2020, approved to amend resolution number 2019-11-12-186 to authorize the amount to be financed to not exceed $850,000 in resolution number 2020-03-10-33. And whereas the county board on April 14th, 2020, approved to amend resolution 2020-03-10-33 to authorize the purchase of the 2020 Ford F-250 with snow plow that was delivered to the maintenance department in the amount of $37,667.81 to Taylor Ford of Mantino in resolution number 2020-04-14-43. And whereas the county board in resolution 2020-04-14-43 also approved to discuss the amount to be financed to purchase the remaining vehicles needed as stated in resolution number 2019-09-10-154, 2019-11-12-186, and 2020-03-10-33 at a date in the future. And whereas several financial institutions were approached, and Peoples Bank of Kankakee County has provided a bid for the financing of those vehicles, and the term will be for 36 months at an annual percentage of 2.25%. And whereas the amount to be financed is not to exceed $555,000 for the purchase of the vehicles and equipment for said vehicles that were previously authorized by prior resolutions. And whereas the finance committee at their meeting of May 28th, 2020, after discussion, review, and consideration, recommends the county board chairman be authorized to sign lease purchase agreement with Peoples Bank of Kankakee County for a total lease purchase not to exceed $555,000 at a purchase, at a percentage interest rate not to exceed 2.25%. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Kankakee County Board hereby authorizes and directs the county board chairman or his designee to enter into a 36-month lease purchase agreement with Peoples Bank of Kankakee County for a total lease purchase not to exceed $555,000 at a percentage interest rate not to exceed 2.25% and such documentation is necessary to effectuate this resolution.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to accept?
I make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hess with a first and a second.
Dunbar.
Dun, Dunbar?
Dunbar.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Now, if we have any discussion, just to basically summarize what happened here is, we can no longer get the Ford Explorers, and so we're just getting the pickup truck and the 11 Tahos. So I think production-wise, they're not making the Explorers anymore, so any discussion with that?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
So, a couple of things with the resolution, that number, if you, if you're following, I apologize for so many changes, but this has been evolving from the start, and there was some problems with the original, even though we put it out as a purchase/lease type of deal, the original lender who gave us the 2.5%, once that got approved, they could no, they would no longer do a three-year or a two-year, no, they would not do a three-year lease. They wanted it in two years, and we, I said, we can't do that, that's not how the, that's not how the resolution reads. So the attorneys went back and forth, and so we opted to talk to another lender who met that number. Now, that number that Mr. Henderson is reading in the resolution is incorrect, it is actually 2.5%, which was the original. I think everything in that resolution said 2.25%. So that probably needs to be amended, first of all. Secondly, the plow that was purchased, that's when all this talk started about, that's when all this talk started about the two-year versus three-year and trying to get that approved. The cars weren't going to be done because of the whole COVID thing and people, companies shutting down, including Ford. So they, the board opted to just pay that outright, so that is no longer there. We are not purchasing a pickup truck. All we are asking for are the 11 Tahos, which would keep our fleet moving, which is the important part of our operation. The other vehicles would have been for Metro and a couple investigators' cars, but due to our revenue issues and things that are going on, we cut that back significantly. So that's kind of the story in the Reader's Digest version. If anybody has any questions about it, this is strictly for 11 Chevy Tahos.
Okay, could I get a motion to amend the resolution in stating the interest rate at 2.5% instead of 2.25%?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, was that Ms. Zakulo?
Mrs. Peters.
Mrs. Peters, okay. It's tough here to see who's making the motion. Mrs. Peters with a first and a second by?
Peyton.
Mr. Peyton. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
I, if there needs to be a discussion.
Okay, all right.
I think there needs to be a little, y'all went before there was a discussion, but I'm not opposed to the amended motion, but what I am saying is, send this motion and all these motions back to the state attorney to correct some things that were there, because you, there's, like, if you look at that 11, it looks like there's a 1 and an 1. I know it means 11, but we need to put it as 11, and it needs to be together. There's a 2.25 that he corrected, the 2.5, there's a zero at the top and another zero for some reason, then there's a lot of other things that's in here, too numerous things. So I'm saying, take this back, that amended motion, we already voted, but take it back so that this will be, all this language and stuff can be corrected and it can be presented forthright, so.
We'll have Susie clean it up. Thank you, Mr. Snipes.
Concerned, including the last motion as well.
Is there any other discussion on the amendment of the resolution? Okay, so for the amendment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, so the document has been amended to reflect 2.5% instead of 2.25%, and we will have all the other scribblers cleaned up before we put it into the record. Thank you. So now on to our discussion on the resolution. Any questions for the sheriff?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Fairfield?
Featherling.
Featherling.
Yeah. What happens to the cars you're using now?
They, some of them get rotated, and then some, okay, go ahead, Sheriff.
So, what, originally what we had agreed to is normally those cars get sent to auction because they're all, 2013s are all very high miles, they go down to an auction in Clinton, and then that money comes back, and in years past, that money had came, had come back to the sheriff's office, and then we used it for equipment for the cars. What we've done this time is, that money is coming back to the county, so that money goes back into the county's general fund, whatever car gets sent to auction. Well, like, if the building department needed cars and stuff, did they, can they get those cars, or? And they will, yeah, if there is, if there is a request for these vehicles within another department, yeah, we can certainly do that, but that would be a decision that the county board makes. Because the building department's driving around in cars that the wipers don't work and things like that on, so 2013 sounds pretty new to them.
Thank you. Mr. Eckhoff?
Sheriff, when do we, thank you, Mr. Chairman, when do we expect these cars to be here, Sheriff?
So, that's the, one of the other issues with this whole COVID thing, our Tahos are here, so those 11 cars are here and ready to go. The issue with the Fords, they did not start even producing those cars till May 18th, so those cars, the Explorers, probably wouldn't have gotten here till the end of August, which is the reason that we, that we just said, let's just deal with the Tahos, because that's, that is what we do every day, those Tahos run every day. We spent, I believe, between last year and then the first part of this year, over $206,000 on vehicle maintenance, which, if you do the math, with a $34,000 Tahoe, that comes out to just about six Tahos right there, in just, in just equipment or just auto repair. So it's important for us to have good vehicles on the road for our patrolmen, and, you know, the other cars, the investigators' cars, Metro's, Metro cars, they're not as hard on those cars, those cars don't have near the miles on them, so that's, that gets pushed down the road for another day.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, so we, uh.
Mr. Snipes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We moved from the 800 and some thousand down to now 550,000, then, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then, well, I'd see the date's going to be cleared up, I was looking at 4/14/43/23, 2020, but they'll clear that up. Okay, everything else, I guess, looks, looks fine, hopefully you can get them on the road.
Snipes stamp of approval, okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Hess.
Aye.
Mrs. Polk.
Aye.
Mr. Snipes.
Aye.
Mr. Byrne.
Aye.
Mr. Seeroy.
Aye.
Mr. Lear.
Aye.
Mrs. Weber.
Aye.
Mrs. Peters.
Aye.
Mr. Peyton.
Aye.
Mrs. Parker.
Aye.
Ms. Dunbar.
Aye.
Mr. Kinzinger.
Aye.
Mr. Fairfield.
Aye.
Mr. Zenz.
Aye.
Ms. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Carrico.
Aye.
Mr. Eckhoff.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Swanson.
Aye.
Ms. Zakulo.
Aye.
Mr. Featherling.
Aye.
Mr. Donnell.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Kirkstra.
Aye.
Mr. Wheeler.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait for that siren to go past, okay. Moving on to new business, this was something that was discussed in length at the executive committee, and I would like the clerk to read it into the record, please.
Resolution of the executive committee of the county board of Kankakee County, Illinois regarding an action plan for the phased reopening of Kankakee County businesses. Whereas COVID-19 novel is a severe acute respiratory illness that can spread among people through respiratory transmissions and present symptoms similar to influenza, and we as Kankakee County board members acknowledge the healthcare issue we face as a community. And whereas between March 15th and April 28th, the governor of Illinois issued an executive order relating to the COVID-19 outbreak, which contained numerous mandates intended to protect the public health of Illinois residents, including closing bars, restaurants, and any nonessential businesses, providing for Illinois residents to stay at home, closing parks and other public places, closing all schools, gatherings of any size, requiring social distancing, and various other provisions. Whereas on April 30th, 2020, the governor of Illinois issued executive order 2020-32, which extended the provisions of previous executive orders with some modifications through the end of May 2020, and further expanded the mandate of the previously issued executive orders by requiring the wearing of face coverings in certain situations. And whereas we feel the extension by the governor of Illinois on April 30th, 2020, was unconstitutional and put unnecessary mental and financial duress on residents of Kankakee County. And whereas at the regularly Kankakee County Board meeting of May 12th, 2020, Kankakee County Board members Zakulo, Swanson, Eckhoff, and Byrne presented a resolution before the board to discuss the reopening of Kankakee County in a phased plan. And whereas on May 20th, 2020, the governor of Illinois announced that the state of Illinois will move into phase three of his reopening plan, based on data he has referred to since his re- he has referred to since his original executive order and extension of said order. And whereas by referring to the Governor, Governor of Illinois own reopening plan in phases, we the Kankakee County Board, using current data, moved to Phase 4 from Phase 3, which reopens offices, salons, and barber shops with capacity limits and other safety precautions. Face coverings are strongly recommended, and the gatherings of 10 or fewer are allowed. To move to the next phase, the positivity rate and hospital admission criteria are the same as moving from Phase 2 to Phase 3. Testing must be available for anyone regardless of symptoms. Contact tracing must begin within 24 hours for more than 90% of the cases in the region. And whereas based on Kankakee County specific data, using the Governor of Illinois own plan and metrics, hospital utilization, hospital bed availability, mortality rates, we, the Kankakee County Board, feel as the federal government is enabling the 50 states to institute their own reopen plans, that the Governor of Illinois enable each of the 102 counties of Illinois to institute their own reopening plan based on his very own plan. And whereas this resolution using the Governor of Illinois own reopening plan and phases, which reopens childcare centers and schools, as well as bars and restaurants, all with safety guidelines from the Illinois Department of Public Health, and the gatherings of 50 people or fewer are allowed. Travel resumes. And whereas businesses with certain licenses, mainly state, open at their own risk as their state license can be affected, we also concur with the Kankakee County Liquor Commissioner's public announcement on May 22nd, 2020. And whereas businesses are reminded that it's the owner's responsibility to ensure that they are in compliance with their insurance and other applicable laws if they reopen. And whereas we, the county board members, do not have the authority to close or open businesses as it relates to executive orders issued by the Governor in his effort to manage COVID-19. And whereas we recommend to the Governor of Illinois the moving of Kankakee County from Phase 3 of the Governor of Illinois's phased-in plan to Phase 4 on June 8th, 2020, with the only exception to the Governor's plan be that wearing face masks are strongly recommended rather than required as indicated in the plan. Now therefore be it resolved by the Kankakee County Board that we recommend to the Governor of Illinois the moving of Kankakee County from Phase 3 of the Governor of Illinois phased-in plan to Phase 4 on June 8th, 2020, with the only exception to the Governor's plan be that wearing face masks are strongly recommended rather than required as indicated in the plan.
Thank you. This went through about five or six amendments in executive committee to get to this final document. So do I have a motion to accept this document?
I've heard here.
Mr. Byrne, seconded by Mr. Ekoff. Now we'll have some discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Kinzinger?
Um, I did not receive a copy of this amended document. I don't know if it was an oversight or what, but in reading it, I heard that we are opening bars, restaurants, but I didn't hear the word churches. I'd like to have the word churches ordered to the, added to the items that are being opened.
Very, uh, in, that's the,
It just says bars, restaurants, and some,
In the ninth paragraph, I, I think, and it was in the packet that Kelly sent out for,
Not my packet.
It wasn't in the la, it was the very last page, I think.
Well, I missed it.
But I, okay.
All I want to do is add the word churches with all the stuff.
In the ninth paragraph, as well as child kindergarten schools and churches, as well as bars, okay. Is that a motion to amend?
I'd like to make it that way.
Motion to amend to add churches in the ninth paragraph? Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Featherling?
Mr. Featherling, seconds?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Also, Mr. Smith, thank, thank you. Okay, any other, Mr. Wheeler?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, I do want to make it clear that this document does not say anywhere that we are opening anything. It references the Governor's reopen. So any amendment cannot, well, I would say, I, I need to clarify or have clarification that this amendment is not saying that we are opening anything.
Correct. Now, Mr. Wheeler, did the Governor's plan not include churches? Is maybe that why the, the term churches got left out?
Uh, I am not, I don't have his Phase 4, but I believe that it was allowing resumption of services based on social distancing requirements.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it was left out by the authors of this document may have a better idea. But I do know that church services were able to resume with social distancing. I believe that was in Phase 4.
Yeah, and I think he let some, the churches open up last week too. So, Mr. Byrne, do you have any information on that?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Lear?
I believe you're right. The Governor amended his executive order so that Phase 3 included opening churches with social distancing. That was in response to some action by courts. And in order to avoid a conflict in the courts, the Governor went ahead and said even in Phase 3 with social distancing, churches could be open.
Yeah, I think you're right, Mr. Lear. Mr. Kinzinger, so,
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I, I don't want to use a slang, but I don't have facts to back this up. But some, from some information I got, I believe it was the churches will be allowed to open at a 25% capacity or 100 people and social distancing would be, would determine.
I think you're right.
I believe, I believe that's what I, what I, what I've heard.
I think you're right, Mr. Kirkstra. Mr. Kinzinger, so this would be in Phase 3, churches are already able to open?
I, I think the restaurants are already open in Phase 3 also, but if we're adding restaurants and bars, I think it would behoove us to add churches just in the side of caution.
I, I,
Restaurants and bars were also open now.
I agree. Okay, so a vote to amend paragraph, I think it was nine?
Nine.
Paragraph nine to add churches. Uh, I have a first and a second. All in favor on the amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you. Now, any other discussion on the document?
Yes, I have,
Mr. Snipes?
I reviewed the Governor's fast Phase Plan, and I looked at what we're doing here. Now, I have a question for the state's attorney, um, before I move forward, and that is, have anything been proven unconstitutional by the Governor?
Say that again, has what been proven unconstitutional?
Well, we say, whereas we feel the extension by the Governor, we feel that it was unconstitutional. Has anything been proven unconstitutional by the Governor? I do know the thing with the churches, he changed it in order to a, a suggestion. But outside of that, has anything been proven unconstitutional?
I think outside of churches, I don't know if anything else has gone or made it through the court system to any kind of final resolution.
Hey, cause I'm, I'm getting to the point, uh, I, the purpose that I wanted to send this to committees because I stated that we needed to have all stakeholders on board from the hospitals to, uh, businesses to everyone. And that apparently is not the case in this particular case because it needs to be more well thought out. The other thing is the resolution is, is in need of some, um, some, uh, grammatical attention, uh, as written. And also, uh, I don't want to get into a position where it appears as though we are contradicting, um, kind of the policy. The Governor has 11 million people to deal with. We have to deal with about 100,000. And I don't see anything that he has done that was overreaching. Uh, I, I think he's cautious in his, um, in the process because if he opens too quickly, then the people are going to, and, and an outbreak occurs, the people are going to blame him. If he don't, um, if he does open and let, and go with everyone else and an outbreak comes, he's still going to be the recipient or the bunt of, um, criticism by the people. So I, I looked, I studied, I looked at his, what he proposed, I looked at what other counties, I talked with constituents, and most of them I agree with. Okay, they'll wear a mask if they don't. Some businesses say you have to, so you have to put them on, otherwise you gotta go to another business. I think safeguards are already in place. Uh, I think we're in the process of reopening. Uh, we certainly have individuals out, uh, outside of the establishment and some inside, but most outside, they're serving and we're moving in the right direction. I think the timing is, uh, where we might have an issue depending if we know specifically what the timing is. But to back a resolution that really has no teeth, other than to make a statement and it's saying we, uh, I can't go with a we. If it's, if it was more thought out, if it was, uh, something that was really, um, hammering the public, I would say, okay, let's send something and have conversations with the Governor. In that case, that's not been the case. And I, I come from a household where there's two parents. I realize I don't agree with some of the things they say, but they make the rules. The people of the State of Illinois elected the Governor into office, and to counteract basically the phases is something I think we can work in internally if we come with a plan, work through our representatives, and talk with the Governor. I've not seen that to be the case. I've heard that it's been expressed, but I've not heard that there's been real conversation in either the House or in the Senate, uh, for anything to really go to the Governor. So I'm going to be opposed to this measure because it will make me look like I'm politically grandstanding. And I don't want to be a part of something that really has no teeth. What is it that we actually doing here other than just saying they can do something without backing them? Are we going to be there for tort liability? The Chairman already has said no. So outside of that, then we need to let the course happen as it is happening. Uh, or we need to have conversations to say, Governor, our community based upon data shows that we are, uh, we're flatlining and we're not where Chicago is, but,
Thank you.
Below that, and so therefore we would like to be placed in Phase 4.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes. And in, in the,
It's something that we need to look at.
In the executive committee, we had the data, and I don't know if you got to see that, uh, that meeting yet, but that was with the Coalition of Kankakee County for reopening. We had the hospitals, all local businesses, the health department. We have the data to prove that Kankakee County is in a, in a position to open to Phase 4. Alright, any other comments?
Did we send that to the legislation process and to the Governor?
Yes, our, our local representatives are using that data. If they can get on the, if they can get it to the floor, they can discuss that to get us out of, uh, the, the Region 1 that's included with Cook County. So I agree with you in part. Any other comments?
We need to wait for the process is my problem. I mean, is my concern. Because to step out outside of putting this out here, it does nothing. It's just basically a waste of my time. Uh, the church issue is being resolved mainly by the church. They took it to the Supreme Court. Uh, the Governor went in immediately took, took the teeth out of that, or his attorneys, uh, by saying it's not a directive, it's a suggestion. Or, uh, so I'm thinking the process is working through. If we communicate, collaborate, and kind of cooperate with what's in place and amended through our representatives, if they're taking it to the floor, then let's, uh, kind of wait that out.
Yeah, that's, that's why we, yes, yes, Mr. Byrne.
Mr. Chairman? Point of order.
Is it, Mr. Byrne?
I don't think it's a, people put on a financial mental duress. Uh, if you, you listen to the rec reading, we are recommending to the Governor. And we are not, we cannot by law, uh, make a business open or closed.
Yeah, it's just,
It's well stated in the resolution about, and making sure that they, that businesses look into it, make sure they're covered. We are not telling people what to do. It is not the government's role, and the Governor was elected by the people, and it doesn't give him the right to tell us what to do. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions first time?
I have a question.
Mr. Kirk's?
Uh, in, in the, as, as far as liability for, and I, I can't use, I can't use a term I want to use because it's not very proper. It's not really proper. But in the, in the instance or a case to where there is a liability claim because of our actions with this resolution.
This isn't an action item, Mr. Kirkstra. This is just a suggestion towards the Governor to allow Kankakee County, to allow its representatives here that believe that we should open. It doesn't give permission to businesses, bars, churches, schools, daycares to open. It's just a recommendation.
It's just a recommendation.
Yes, to the Governor.
If this recom, if, if this recommendation is passed by us, are we taking liability for anything that goes wrong?
No, and I think it's stated in the, uh, the third paragraph from the, from the end. "We do not have the authority to close or open businesses as it relates to an executive order issued by the government in his efforts to manage COVID-19." We're just saying that our data proves that we shouldn't be included in Phase 3 anymore. We should, we should be pushed into Phase 4.
And then, and in other words, the county, nor the county, the county board, nor the village officials, nor anybody who allows businesses to open, they open on their own and they are code, they're, they're the ones that are going to be, the businesses themselves are the ones that are going to take on the liability.
Correct.
If anything does go wrong.
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
Or is that what we are approving?
That's what we are approving.
That's what it is now.
Pardon?
It's always that way. Business has the liability.
Uh, I understand, I under, I understand that, but, uh, there's always that one who's going to decide to take it as far as he thinks he can, and that would just muffle things up.
I will remind the, the members here that there are people out there that are struggling that don't know if their businesses are going to be able to remain open. And to further push this down the road and not put pressure on the Governor to open us up could cause more harm than good. So that's my opinion. Any other opinions first time?
I do.
Uh, okay. Mrs. Zucculo?
They have the option not to open if they so desire. It's completely up to the business whether they open or not. We're not demanding that they open.
Yes.
I understand.
Any other comments, questions?
I have, uh, one, my thing is that,
Hold on, Mr. Snipes, let me, let me get everybody first time, then I'll go back to you. Any otherbody first time? Seeing none? Alright, Mr. Snipes. Oh, wait, hold on, who was that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hess?
Thank you. I believe Mr. Hendricks read that this was a resolution for the Executive Committee in his first statement. Is that correct? Or is that from the county board?
Resolution of the Executive Committee.
Yes, you're correct, Mr. Hess. That's, it states, states that in this resolution.
It should be the county board. That resolution of the Executive Committee, which should read Resolution of the County Board.
Okay, you're making a motion to amend the title?
Correct. If we're going to do this, we want to make sure it's right.
Anybody second that motion?
Second.
Mrs. Parker, seconds? All in favor of rec, resolution of Kankakee County Board?
We have discussions on that. We had discussions on that.
Oh, okay, this, Mr. Wheeler?
Well, is that, uh, is the date, is that referencing that at the Executive Committee, this resolution came out of that committee? Is that the way it reads?
This is in the title.
It's in, it's on the title of the resolution. It says "Resolution of the Executive Committee of the County Board of Kankakee County".
Okay, that's, that was my question. On the amendment, that was my question on the amendment.
Okay. Any other questions on the amendment?
Who was the second?
The only thing with the "we" is it changed into "we", that means it's coming from the County Board. And I definitely would have to basically extend. And the reason I'll tell you that is because every business, every citizen has a right to go to, straight to their, uh, to either Patrick Joyce or...
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, this is the discussion on the amendment.
Yeah, this is...
That's what we're saying, that's what I'm discussing. We said...
Point of order has been called, this, this, uh, do you have any? Do you have any comments on? This is the County Board meeting, so this is a resolution becoming in front of the County Board? So, you can vote either way you want on this resolution, but it...
You just made an amendment, and then, then you have the discussion on the amendment.
Right.
Because you changed it from the Executive to the County Board.
Right.
But, again, I'm stating, every person has the right to go to their legislator at the state level just like they do at the county if there's a county issue. If their business and things are being affected, this do absolutely nothing. Their voices done. That's why I'm saying, I'm not, I can't support, we can't say "we", uh, you can, but I can't.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Snipes. Any other questions on the amendment? Okay, all in favor of the amendment to say "Resolution of the County Board of Kankakee County", say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign?
Nay.
Okay. Moving on, is there any other discussion on this resolution?
Yes, I think that this resolution has to go back. It's, there's a lot of areas where it's not been written. I mean, we have to look at what you're writing, and there's some open sentences, there's some things that are not. This, you have to relook at this if you're going to basically send it from a group of professionals. And I think you have a, send it to your State's Attorney to kind of, uh, look at it.
I believe the State's Attorney reviewed it, Mr. Snipes.
Uh, you, I, I think we need to review it again. I'll go to his office and we'll...
Mr. Rowe?
Look at this, some things that are not...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call the question.
We take, we take that as, as a resolution like that. We take it as provided. All we do is put it in the resolution form. We don't edit that, we don't, none of that stuff.
Don't spell check it?
Yeah, well, we need to look at it then, uh, because...
The question has been called, so I will call for a roll call vote.
Call the question.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Hess?
Aye.
Mrs. Polk?
Hey, point of order, are we, are we voting on the call of the question? Because that's a, that's a motion. So, are we going for that or are we going straight to the, to the vote? There's un, uh, there's unclear. If you're calling for the question, then there has to be a, a, a vote up on it.
All right, this is a vote for the call for the question. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay, no.
Okay, ayes have it. Roll call vote.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Hess?
Aye.
Mrs. Polk?
I must say, I have to say because I was on the phone talking to somebody.
Mr. Snipes?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, that, that's out of order. Every board member must vote unless they're in a county.
Mrs. Polk?